The mayor of Alton. I apologize for the weird committee in the evening. I didn't have the technology right, so we were all able to pick some of my candidate parts. We sorted that out. So first thing is late files.
So the remaining late files, the last one, which was first one, which is two cases three third six is already taken care of. Yeah, now. You know, late file of the application for a block party on Barton Street on August fourteenth. There's an amended language, the ordinance eighty-one is coming in. The communication two thirty-seven is a letter from the congregation with the church requesting about the crosswalk on Pleasant Street. The changing tides and ordinance eighty-four just came in and sent around. Saturday morning on street sidewalks and other public places, all collections and maintenance thereof.
Motion to waive the rule to accept the late files.
Second.
Discussion? Let's there say aye. Any votes? I can't hear it.
It's been a ton of order. Since this is also a Zoom broadcast, we have to take more calls on the time.
No, it's one of the participants from, we have to do that. We're okay. They're all here and one thankful for maybe it's our first time in sixteen months, so. Now we're going to go to public comment. See if there's anyone on the clipboard. While our clerk is checking the clipboard, yeah, those who dial in remotely, please raise your hand electronically. You don't have anyone who signed it? Last call on public comment electronically. You've got a closed public comment, excuse me. There's no mayor's comment tonight. Uh, chair and uh, chief of staff are on vacation. Before we go to consent agenda, I actually want to take something back order. Headed that with me, uh, call on the chair of public safety and answer the colleague because there are a couple applicants here. So please hold up on the consent agenda to see if they didn't. Get some of those applications first.
Uh, thank you.
I'm ready to stand.
Uh, thank you, council president. Uh, I'd like to make a motion uh, for application twenty-nine and application thirty-two as amended uh, recently uh, to come out of commit uh, and motion for those to be approval collectively.
Second. Come out and be approved collectively. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? I'm sorry. You got that from Jones. So both from rule and.
We collectively approve. One motion, all done.
All done. Thank you very much.
That was definitely uh, application twenty-nine and thirty-two.
Yes, and the amendment and amended was for thirty-two to move the date to uh, eleven seventh. As per the documentation in your uh, uh, pack.
That is uh, that's the updated grace day November seventh. It's in communications.
Okay, so anyone who's here for the half marathon on October twenty-fourth or the road race on October eleven, seven?
Seven.
Seven. Free go. You're done. You're approved. Right when there's.
Thank you.
We said October seventh.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, let's get back to the consent agenda.
Teaching that consists of before those three minutes, June seventeen, June twenty-second, June. There's a first communication with the application for a road race five K uh, on September twenty-sixth to go to public station. There is. Transfer one oh eight, multiple accounts, ninety-nine thousand dollars and that. Sent same amount in multiple accounts to go to budget finance. Following first reading of appointments, appointment two fifty-nine, Susan Chase, twenty-four Oak Street. Five, we told ten, twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. Throughout two reappointments, appointment two sixty, Patricia Technic. For Doug Street, we serve permission to seven thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, appointment two sixty-one. Will he bend his stuff? Fifty-five, uh, Highland Street as an assistant, however, that's the chef responsible and special police officer until eight one, two thousand twenty-four. There's a number of items to be removed uh, from the respective committees such as budget finance. Order two sixty-two, ordinance eighty-two, communication two three three, transfer one oh six. Orders two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine, two sixty, two sixty-one, and two sixty-three. On planning and development, appointments. Two fifty-five, two forty-eight, and two fifty-one, ordinance eighty-one, order one ninety-six. Communication two fifteen, for public safety, ordinance eighty, application thirty-three. Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine. Forty and forty-one. Includes the consent.
Counselor Khan?
Uh, yes, thank you, council president. I was wondering for the minutes from June twenty-eighth, since I was not at the meeting, can I have that removed?
Right, okay, let's pull the twenty-eighth.
And then the appointment for the stroke of commission, I think that gets referred to planning and development. Is that correct?
Not under twenty-eight. I'm sorry.
It's not required of the rule, but if you want to vote, you can. We've been voting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I will.
All right, so we're gonna pull that one.
Thank you.
Also, uh, please pull the minutes from the seventeenth, as I understand. So there are three things we have, uh, consent agenda, in seventeen, in twenty-eight minutes. And then reappointment Patricia Technic, store commission, anything else? Motion to approve as amended? Okay, all those, there's no debate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, good. So yes, thank you. All right, so, pardon for now. So now, the mayor's update, so we're in communication.
Application. Application thirty-two, we just spoke about it, communication asking um, the date November seventh. Where to delve into that eventually.
Motion to receive five seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that's received five, we're all set.
So late file block party on uh, Barton Street uh, suggesting August fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Motion to uh, send it to public safety.
Seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Next?
Next is uh, communication two thirty-six, again, that was already disposed of, over the season on the destruction, I think that's.
Motion to see five second.
Discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Votes, thank you.
Communication uh, three thirty-seven is also one of the late files. That's a request by the church, sent with an application to. The crosswalk that fits on church.
Motion of clear public safety?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I think crosswalks for uh, neighborhood services, yeah.
Okay, so the rule, uh, the ordinance says parking in traffic is the public safety, but so could they mean this is other, this is best.
Uh, well, uh, we, in the last.
Parking or, or traffic?
Uh, corrected, it, it's a, uh, it's reconstituting the crosswalk in different colors.
Okay, makes sense. So. I'll, I'll look at all that in motion. Okay. Any second? So, near the city services, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's fine. Well, where do you want to do the minutes?
On the remaining minutes?
Yeah, no, 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 that was seventeen and twenty-eight.
Well, seventeen was just approved, I think.
No, no, that was the twenty-second. We only approved the twenty-second, the seventeen and the twenty-eight because two of us weren't there.
It's all, okay, I actually had the twenty-second pulled for the seventeen, was pulled believing the twenty-second.
Right.
So the twenty-second was approved, uh, during June seventeen and June twenty-eight back in, uh, October, excuse me, August nine.
What can we do now to communication?
Um, sure can.
Okay, I think the remaining counselors, their motion on the June seventeenth, motion to approve the June seventeenth, second. Any discussion and corrections? Okay, I'm chief's on that one, says absent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, so that's ten, ten nothing.
Motion to approve, June twenty-eight minutes, second.
Counselor Khan and I, we choose, any comments, corrections? All in favor, approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, done. Now we're on the next.
Thank you. So, uh, Lee Johnson, emergency preamble, state in perfect part, just doing a transfer from health machine, from fire person. Time sensitive, compositions on prior year departmental transfers. He did move this a year and we have dead in there. Therefore, the city, there's emergencies submitted, counselor.
Motion to approve, second. Discussion? Just on the birds. Also, Tom, do you want to?
I can typically do transfers through July to see. And so, uh, if we consider this, ask them to. It is, it's actually.
Okay, we're understanding what we're doing. Any further comments? What call?
Call on emergency preamble, council colleague.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Shannon.
Yes.
Counselor Tonto, yes, counsel mobile, yes, counsel Wallace.
Yes.
And Z.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Dublin.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lang.
Yes. Yes.
Interested to transfer itself.
Counselor on seven, uh, can you just bring the amounts?
Okay, it's transferring from house to home, three millions, fifty-five thousand, transfers to three different towns, fire overtime, thirty-one, five. Dispatch overtime, ten thousand, and fire paid holidays, thirteen thousand.
Motion to approve, so.
Any question? Counselor Lee, no, sorry, and, Counselor Z.
I, I just have a, uh, couple questions. One is, and I don't know if the chief's here, I know the mayor's office is here with us tonight. The first question is, we did, as it says, we did just do a transfer literally a couple weeks ago, so. Was this because all of a sudden the last week of the fiscal year, everybody decided to carry a big over? Because of COVID, I read that, I believe in the memo. And the second question is, the category that the transfer to has fifty-eight thousand dollars according to the transfer, so why can't the category money cover? The deficit.
Chief, if you could please stand, there's a white piece of tape on the floor, and that's where you're supposed to stand, and a shot of that.
Sure, yeah, okay. Thank you, uh, counselors, uh, first on that, the accounts. Um, there is money left in the account, we don't believe it's going to be enough, that's what we're asking for the transfer. Or this is the end of the season, uh, numbers, end of the fiscal year, numbers are still being tabulated. This was especially heavy year to the illnesses, injuries, there was about uh, thirty thousand dollars caused just from responding to COVID, um, when all year, everybody came to work, was not able to take vacation because there was nowhere to go. Uh, and we need all hands on deck to deal with all the causes here, including COVID. Just trying to put all of the last minute numbers together, the hundred thousand dollars that you approved as we do almost every year, uh, those are best guesses, uh, based on the numbers we think are going to come in. As I've stated several times, we could never actually afford the budget, the time that they have on the books between vacation and sick leave, and we certainly can't predict injuries and illnesses. So we try to give the council the best guess before we get too far into the last quarter. Uh, and unfortunately, this year and last year, we had to come back uh, to you for additional funds to balance out those accounts. Um, and again, vacation, they're allowed to take two, they're all of it carried over two weeks. Uh, we asked for carry over three weeks, uh, but that would certainly just exacerbate the problem further for next year. So that request was denied. So a lot of people want to use it, or you lose it situation in the month of June. So that's how we get where we are. Hope to answer your question, Counselor Z.
Yes, please. So. But, but what I'm saying is the category though, which I'm guessing is personnel services, has a balance of fifty-eight K. You think that's other lines, which doesn't force and says. And the last question as a follow-up, so could COVID money be used to cover this if the, if this is really coming from COVID? As a result of COVID, is that explored using?
Right, I have the finance director on line, COVID question. Better than that. Questions? If there's fifty-eight thousand in category.
In the, in the bucket, is it?
Yeah, maybe you guys have not called.
I believe that's going to be used up. Any of the fifty-five thousand that you approved, that we don't, it certainly won't be spent. Um, but we believe the fifty-five thousand represents what's going to be needed to balance out all those categories to close out the fiscal year.
If I may, uh, finance director Ethan, man, you shut some light?
Sure, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Um, so in terms of budget category, when we submitted that. There was still a role remaining, so based on hours. There is now a, we are now showing a deficit of fifty-three thousand five hundred, uh, so that's why the fifty-five thousand dollar transfer is needed. Um, and then secondly, in terms of the CARES Act, uh, we have already charged off, um, you know, any allowable expenses such as staff that had to quarantine, uh, where we had to backfill, um, the, the, the staff. Um, so all of that has already been accounted for, uh, in this transfer.
But if I could follow up, I put, uh, under, under the legislation, wouldn't, wouldn't this be eligible for a person as well?
So, uh, under the American Rescue Plan Act, it most likely would. Um, however, under the CARES Act, it was really only, um, limited to those staff who were, um, needing to backfill or, you know, doing, you know, any, any public health measures.
Okay, so for the new act that was passed by Congress in the last couple of months, not for the CARES Act last year.
That's correct.
I did, I just, yeah, so can we do this transfer even to get the books to balance, so you can close and then get the money out of ARPA? We've already received the first, uh, tran, shift of about eight hundred thousand dollars, which we'll be talking about tonight. Is that possible?
Yes, actually, that would be great. So once, because yes, it's definitely, uh, paying for essential workers is a clear uh, category under the rescue plan. So I think if you're able to put through, through this transfer, um, then we could definitely look at, you know, any, any eligible expenses incurred, incurred through, uh, since March eleventh, when it was passed, to see what that amounts to.
And one last question, um, so with, with assuming this transfer passes, what is the grand total of the, of the fire overtime line? What becomes the grand total?
Sure, so the, the total should be approximately four hundred eighty-four thousand.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Devon?
Yes, who, chair, uh, who the president, uh, what's the explanation for the fifty-five thousand dollar surplus in the health and transfer premiums?
Explain, uh, why there's a surplus in that one.
Sure, so with that such a, a, a large line item in the budget, um, you know, having a few people split, um, move from a PPO to an HMO or a family, uh, to a single family, it's, it's very frequently that this line item can can have, you know, a hundred to, to two hundred thousand dollars left in it at the end of the year, depending on, on what the employees uh, subscribe to during open enrollment.
Certain new questions?
Oh, thank you.
Other counselors? Okay, no revoking on. Transfers, sir. Uh, all in favor, can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Selective, okay, thank you. First reading appointments, Patricia Technic, I guess, pulls.
Motion approved. Thank you, David.
Seven. Any session? Yes. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, okay, actually, point of words, President, I have another transfer on the way. That was near too, just didn't have an emergency. So without, uh, uh. Plus, it's a consent.
For Jones, that's the X, seven, nine, seven, seven.
Is it a consent?
Yes.
That was already referred, okay, sorry. All right, uh. So if you could read it, was it again?
Patricia Technic for Doug Street, and the store commission.
That's a three-year. Okay.
Seven, three, one, two, thousand.
Second read. Do it.
Do. Well, we have, uh, appointment two fifty-seven, which is R and G, two River Street, the council, eighteen, to five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. We have appointment two fifty-eight, it's a missing K, Alpon, fifty-eight, Merrimack Street, to the board of registrars, to three thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved collectively, second. Any session? Roll call, same.
Roll call on both, um, second reading appointments, counsel McCollum.
Yes.
Counselor Sheen.
Yes.
Counselor Tonto.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Dublin.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lang.
Yes.
Counselor Parker.
Yes.
Orders are. Order two sixty-four. Uh, which is continued from June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty. It's here, twenty-one, and it amended rule twenty-eight, uh, it's a simple amendment of end of the year commission. Keeping the word inspector. Submitted by council, see.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Right, I mean, I think we just had a little confusion last time about inspector versus commissioner, so. I thought we should keep inspector and we should add commissioner, so that's why I continue, I think it was worth taking this for these time, it's a, it's a fairly simple question, yes.
First date comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? That's out, and. Ordinance.
Ordinance, the first ordinance is. Ordinance seventy-nine, second reading of plumbing and gas needs, section five eleven, and five, one twelve.
Motion to approve on second reading, second.
Roll call on second reading, ordinance seventy-nine, counsel McCollum.
Yes.
Counselor Sheen.
Yes.
Counselor Tonto.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Dublin.
No.
Um, no. Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lang.
Yes.
Counselor I.
Yes.
That leads us to the late file ordinance eighty-four, streets that were open on the public station, alterations of the maintenance. That is, uh, certainly submitted, like, first, Wallace and McCollum.
Motion to refer to neighborhood and city services.
Second.
Sign?
That's what a neighborhood and city service.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this, um, ordinance has to do with some sort of process and review for streets and sidewalks that are going to be redone in our city. We're coming into kind of a new era with the pavement management plan. City council has been approving more of their own funds, so this, um, will kind of help with the public process and understanding what the commitments are for, for roadwork, sidewalk work, moving forward. So I think it fits better than neighborhood and city services, because more planning and design rather than public safety. Thank you.
Yeah, the counselors. All in support, if you want, should say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, that's why I said it's sensor. I want to hear. There is nothing to report from I O T development. Um, on the I O T, on the market, letting part expansion, I, I think you've been peppered with requests to fill out the survey. But if you haven't, I can order to do, there's a survey being conducted by social associates to get some input, it's not a final, final, final direction for the science of part expansion. So please let me know if you don't have that, also, in the public list. Budget and finance, Jersey.
Motion to approve order two sixty-two as amended committee.
Second.
Mr. President, um, this is one of three matters leading to ARPA, but it's the, it's the only one that, that will have an approval, so. Uh, this is in order to accept the funds, as you know, as a matter, uh, it's a matter of practice, we accept uh, large grants, has been the typical thing, and obviously, this is a large grant, it's about five point five million dollars for the course of the next three years. And there's a number of whereas clauses and then an acceptance. Uh, the amendment in committee is probably the most salient part, and that is, uh, creating uh, a method for approval for funds that are going to be spent from this, uh, typically, you know, grants come in and they're spent by the administ, uh, executive branch, I should say, in this case, um, through some negotiation and some compromise, we've reached an agreement here to form an ad hoc committee, or the mayor will form an ad hoc committee. And she proposes to have the chair of public utilities, the chair of budget finance, and the chair of neighborhood and city services sit on that, along with the mayor, to make recommendations. And upon that recommendation and recommendation of the mayor, as you can see, the request to spend from this fund will come to the council and a simple majority of six of the council could approve. Um, obviously, this does not supersede any, uh, requirements under ARPA itself, there are certain guidelines, uh, as to when and how you can spend the funds, and that's still developing, but this is timely because we have received the first eight hundred thousand dollars or so and are expecting to receive more funds soon, including the so-called county share, because we don't have any counties really in Massachusetts. So, uh, the amendment was passed in committee two to zero, and the entire thing as amended comes to you with a recommendation to approve, two to zero, and then we, uh, get the ad hoc going for how to spend this.
Other passengers? This is the order, so, um, there's no further, all in favor, uh, can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to receive collectively ordinance eighty-two and communication three thirty-three, ARPA fund and ARPA funds.
Second.
So ordinance eighty-two was the, uh, sort of another idea for ARPA that was to create, uh, sort of a stabilization fund or receipts reserve as we've done, uh, but again, the compromise reached in order two sixty-two covered it, and communication three thirty-three was simply a letter from the mayor stating her position. Uh, both come to you with a vote of two to zero or a recommendation.
Counselor favor, receive violence, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Motion to approve transfer one oh six, which is, um, five thousand dollar transfer from library salary staff to library maintenance.
Second.
Long story short is that the last year, the CPA granted the library about a hundred and twenty-seven, hundred and thirty thousand dollars, let's call it, towards the, uh, HVAC in the archival center. They went out to bid, they came back, the bid was higher than the hundred and thirty award by about ten. And basically, the, the, uh, director of the library suggests that we cover that ten by using five from here, which happened to be some overage on library salary staff. Um, and then they will get the other five from the friends of the library. Um, there is money left over in the salary staff, because of COVID, there was basically some excess positions that went, or excess hours that went on fill. We've done a couple of other recent transfers from this, uh, library salary staff, and then, again, the, the destination would be towards that HVAC project in the amount of, of ten, and now you get five from here and five from the friends, that's the reason.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Of two to zero, recommended to approve.
Okay. Seventy-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve order two fifty-eight, which is chapter fifty-nine, section five N, acceptance thereof. Second. Okay, so this is a, uh, this would be a, as, as we have talked about over the recent years about abatement and exemption programs, this would be a brand new program. So whereas some of the other matters we'll be discussing are alterations of existing programs, we have, this is a brand new one. And what's new about it is that fifty-nine five N creates a workoff program for veterans, so you're probably familiar with the workoff program for seniors, which we'll talk about tonight as well. And because it's brand new, uh, we are accepting it, and essentially, um, it works really the same as, as the senior workoff program. Uh, two things though, one is that, um, in accepting here, we will allow others to perform the service for the, for the person, the recipient, if they are physically unable to do so, that's what point number one is. And the second one is that rather than having a dollar maximum, we're going to max out by the number of hours times minimum wage, so that, obviously, that number can change as minimum. And the second one is that rather than having a dollar maximum, we're going to max out by the number of hours times minimum wage, so that, obviously, that number can change as minimum wage is slated to go up. So the hundred and twenty five hours will be consistent times whatever the minimum wage is, at the current moment, that would total up to be sixteen hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, and so we don't know, obviously, how many people will use this program because it hasn't existed, but at some sort of parameter, we know that there are about ninety nine veterans that currently receive an exemption under another portion of the statute. It gives you some idea of what you might expect to see, and I, and this idea, some of these other ideas, uh, were brought to us, um, in large part by the ad hoc, I've learned about, um, uh, work off programs, and Paula Burke is here uh, from the senior center and could probably speak to them as well, uh, but we did approve this in committee or recommend approval two to zero, uh, to accept this and their performance program.
And motion to amend. Oh, yeah, I believe there was a request to change the language from, uh, in, in the paragraph that reads that the property tax exemption for veterans and then to cross out exemption using the term abatement.
Yeah, if I may, so just, uh, yes, the, after, after we.
Second.
So after, and I just had my papers in this, so after we had met, the next day, we received the request from Jill Brennan to modify the term, so um, if, if it's friendly, it's to strike the word exemption in the first sentence and replace it with the word abatement. And it is also, uh, to strike the words in the second sentence to the exemption. So that way it will read that, comma, the property tax abatement for veterans under MGL fifty nine five N will be accepted with adjustments as follows. So the issue was, this is not an exemption, it's not a statutory exemption, this is an abatement, and this cleans up the language, uh, to that effect, and didn't feel necess- 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 necessitated bringing in a brand new order and going to committee again and we can do it by, so that's friendly and then not.
All right, so that's accepted, second accepted as well.
Yes.
Okay, uh, other candidates? Remember, we do have the director here, any questions? Yes.
Uh, thank you, Council, uh, President, um, I voted for it in committee, I will vote for it again, I think this is a wonderful program, uh, put into place. Uh, these are volunteer hours, there's no real restrictions on what they can do, uh, given, uh, the personnel challenges we've just gone through in the budget. I would challenge every, uh, uh, department head to look for, uh, volunteer opportunities at different times, tax bills going out, uh, parks, uh, volunteer work. Uh, whatever the case may be, I think it covers the gamut, I think we have a great resource, uh, in veterans, uh, of all, uh, uh, skill levels, and I think we should take advantage of that.
Other candidates? Uh, I just need none, um, this is an order, an order. Is that correct?
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve order two fifty nine, chapter fifty nine, section five K.
Second.
So versus, let me get the amendment before I forget it, so the, the amendment here, uh, motion to amend is to strike in the second sentence to the exemption. Those three words.
Second.
Um, so on the, on the amendment and, and, and on the, the greater matter, so this is an existing program, a new report, this is the one we're used to hearing about. And really, the substantive changes here are two, one is, again, creating allowance for someone else to do the work if the recipient is physically unable to do so. And the second one is to, to change what is existing, a cap of fifteen hundred dollars, now to that hundred and twenty five, so you'll notice that those two changes would then also make it consistent within now literally minutes old veterans program that we just created, and, um, both take, take effect, um. In, in, uh, immediately, right away, and, um. I think that's what I have on this one.
Other candidates? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, that's maximum. Now I'm asking ended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I'm going to give these two a support to the amendment, same. And then, uh, moving on to motion to approve order two sixty fifty nine five K, changing, uh, income limits.
Second.
Okay, so this is our third and final on chapter fifty nine, so essentially the, the key here is, um, changing the income limits for the senior work off program. Currently, we have a, a, we do have an income limit, and that is tied to, um, the average median household income, and as shown, it's about eighty five, eighty six. And the thing about that limit, it is consistent for everybody, it's eighty five, whether you're married, single, filing, or whatever, that doesn't make a difference. This proposal is to change that limit to three different limits, so if you are single, the limit would become sixty one K, so that's a reduction from eighty five. If you were head of household, it would go to seventy six thousand, which is again a reduction. If you are married, it would go to ninety two thousand, so that's actually an increase from the current limit, so there's a bit of nuance there in terms of the change. Um, those figures are set based on the senior circuit breaker, so that doesn't mean that they're going to be those numbers forever, they can change as time goes forward. Uh, we did talk about this, um, at length in committee, and probably the most important question was, is there any anticipated, uh, folks that have been participating that would no longer be eligible to participate based on these changes, because again, a lot of the limits have gone up, not down. And the answer was that, um, based on the data that was available, there was a concern that two individuals, uh, may, may be unable, unable, I should say, and, um. The response to that was that the assessor and other folks on the ad hoc are essentially exploring ways that they can continue. We did not come up with a formal resolution about how to handle those two cases, unfortunately, in, uh, as we know from previous discussions. Sometimes the assessor has a little bit of, of latitude, let's call it for lack of a better term, but in this case, the statute doesn't quite allow it, so that did not quite yet resolve, and then I don't have an answer for you specifically, um, but, uh, but the committee still felt comfortable in moving forward since two out of the three limits are going down, and the theory was that a lot more people would come in to, to be able to participate, and it comes to you two to zero, uh, to be able to, uh, to recommend approval on their amendment, same.
Those pass. I just have a quick question, sure to answer, so the senior circuit breaker, is that promulgated every year by ELS or?
Yes.
Okay, so departmental. Any further comment on this? Uh, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve order two sixty one, except it's a six hundred seventy five dollars from I U B.
Yep.
So. Uh, we discussed this briefly in committee, uh, and this was a cost sharing agreement with the Parks Department, uh, that the, uh, in, in support of irrigation and women park restrooms, uh, it wasn't a terrible amount of detail given about exactly what the six seventy five would go to, but fairly low nominal amount, the committee, uh, recommends that it be accepted gratitude for six seventy five. Two to zero.
Thank you, other candidates? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve order number two sixty three. Second, this is a, uh, an order reducing the, uh, maximum spending limit on recreational services or N Y S from five thirty five to four thirty five. First, just an editorial note, you'll see the electrical inspector has a change there, but remember, we just dealt with that, that's done, so that's not actually part of this order. It's just that when this was submitted, that one was still in flight, so it's down the final amount, so that is not a proposal or a change, we just handled that, uh, two weeks ago, I believe. The salient part here is the reduction in spending limit from five thirty five to four thirty five, so just going back to our budget night, uh, there is a change essentially in how this would be accounted for, it has been brought into the budget. And we do remember that from the amendments we accepted during the budget process showing those two positions, and then in order to compensate for those two positions, there's now a transfer, uh, that will be made, or was made, I should say, from the N Y S revolving fund into, uh, the budget, and so as we discussed during the budget, that is anticipated to be a regular ongoing annual, uh, transfer, and we see that consistently, the parking revolving fund, or I call revolving. Parking receipts reserve for appropriation is done in a similar way, and so it didn't make sense to leave the limit higher because that transfer doesn't count against the spending limit, so this is more in line with what's expected. But in terms of operationally, this doesn't change any positions or anything, it's simply accounting and control, uh, the committee discussed it, and it was, uh, two to zero and recommended to approve.
Other candidates? Everybody understand? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, one last thing, Mr. President, I'm just, um, chair nervousness, so I'm going to make a motion to waive the rules and pull out the, the Phillips drive matter, and just with the intent of sending back in committee of the whole. If somebody could help me with that, I just, that way I'm personally as here, believing about it on Thursday.
Second. Wait a second.
So that's order number two fifty two.
And I don't need to wave the rule, right?
I did, because I think we're in the package.
Okay, so motion to waive the rule, it's not in the package, first, and second, did anyone have to comment on that? Now all those in favor of waiving the school, say aye.
Aye.
And now motion to refer back to budget of finance and committee of the whole, second.
We got to take it out first.
Oh, is that the way to remove? Okay, sorry, motion to remove and then immediately recommit budget of finance, committee of the whole.
Second, any session on this?
Just a reminder, so we're meeting this Thursday, July fifteenth, six P M, here in person, we'll have the S C, the engineering folks, we'll have, uh, members of the city engineer, we'll have other staff, neighbors. I was just starting to get nervous hearing from some counselors, so I don't want to have any issue with.
It's available.
It will be, yes.
Okay, all right, any other candidates? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And that's if the budget of finance.
Uh, sure, come on, education.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, so the education committee, um, will be meeting sometime in August, our intention is to meet, uh, moving forward after the school committee business meeting, so that we could deliberate on a probably more, more detailed with the things that they already talked about in their meeting. However, with that said, I still am working on that date, and I will contact my members on that, because we also know the strategic plan effort is underway, and I need to check in on what, what's happening there. Because I know we've asked some counselors here to be part of that effort, and some of that communication hasn't come through to me yet, so I will be working on that, and I hope to let the committee know as well as, as the other counselors, when those meetings will be happening, so that we could start being part of that process, so stay tuned, and I'll hopefully have an update sometime in August, thank you.
Thank you, sure. Uh, general government, um, not yet recently, but, uh, just to know, we're still digesting the government's review video reports, so for example, uh, Counselor Con and I are going to be coming in August, uh, August ninth. With the, uh, parking, uh, form. We'll also tick up some of the items that. So that's an example, so again, council should feel free to see things in that report that are acting, and want fixed. Miss Empress, Chair Devon.
Uh, I'll let you report.
Thank you. All right, Chair Con, we were concerned.
Doesn't work. Um, actually, one that.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, we will be, uh, meeting on, uh. What, next Wednesday at six thirty via Zoom, um, to discuss the, uh, lease, uh, proposals that have submitted, uh, for our review, the proposals that submitted for our review, as well as comments that have come, that come along, so maybe a favorite comparison.
This is fifty Parkers.
Fifty Parkers, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, uh, Chair Shan, writing the most.
All right, motion to approve, point two fifty five.
Second.
So, uh, Mr. Calp is a esteemed architect, he has moved to our community, he's been here just before COVID, but he is definitely well aware of all the things going on, he is engaged in discussions on pedestrian aspects in the report, thank, uh, Counselor Moore for, we're both impressed with that one, gets answers to great questions. Uh, we have, the committee motion to approve, recommend approval, three to zero of his appointment to the planning.
You, Council.
We'll call. We'll call him, appointment, we're on the call. Uh, Council McCollum.
Yes.
Council Shane.
Yes.
Council Tonto.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Devon.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council I.
Yes.
Mr. President, my second on that was.
Uh, Chair.
All right, motion to approve appointment two forty eight, Christopher Bay, store.
Second.
All right, Mr. Bay has been on the commission since twenty eighteen, painted about the same time as the current chair of the store commission. He didn't think he was worthy, as he is a history teacher, and I think the chair of the store commission disagreed wholeheartedly that he's been a huge asset, bringing in some good diversity to the committee. Uh, we voted three to zero to approve his reappointment to the store commission.
The candidates.
We'll call on the appointment, Chris Bay, Council McCollum.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tonto.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Devon.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve appointment two fifty one, Eileen Graff, fruit straight to store commission.
Second.
This graph is another esteemed architect in our community, she's been here well over twenty years, been practicing architecture in New England and Colorado. Uh, she was spoken of by the Chair of the Planning Board and the Store Commission, they've been most impressed with her coming to their committees, and she is looking forward to collaborating with the neighbors in Frick Street area. The committee voted three to zero to approve her appointment to Frick Street Commission.
Need to be.
We'll call on, uh, Eileen Graff, Council McCollum.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tonto.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Devon.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance eighty one, form of the store commission.
Second.
You can thank me for the large fonts in your packet, everyone can read this quite well, um, this is, uh, I'm updating the definition of forum to the store commission and defining what affirmative vote is. Let's see, there've been issues in the past where a local person has come in and questioned what an actual forum on the committee is, and what positive and affirmative mean. So we updated the language here to, uh, make sure it was kosher and very clear, so we voted three to zero and made to approve.
I just had a quick question, um, so if, if there, this is a seven member body, if, if there is a vacancy, a quorum is still four, the way that this is written, so we had an empty seat. Good, quick question. Thank you.
Other candidates?
First reading ordinance amended to, uh, eighty one, Council McCollum.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tonto.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Devon.
Yes.
Council Con.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Motion to receive order one ninety six, open space rec plan.
Second.
All right, the committee did finally, the planning board, I'm sorry, the planning director finally got the, um, open space rec plan back from the state, uh, a long time going, we did COVID. Got all the inmates back in in June, we did review them, and we agreed that by this time of the meeting, we're done, there's a great two to zero to receive and file to space plan.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, last but not least, motions to receive about communications two fifty, letter from Jim.
Second.
All right, this is an oldie but goodie, came in first week of last year, this was, uh, Mr. McCollum's request to have, uh. Fence and, uh. Gosh, what's the word? The, the barrier along the street, the way Nicole, thank you, thank you, Council. Had the guard removed, and DPS came in and said there was a big gully and couldn't move that for safety reasons, but we did agree that, uh, once we did give the open space land, which should be the next month, should be coming, Council. That we would be reengaged, Mr. McColl, car, sorry.
Or easy as a painting.
We did agree that Mr. McCarty should be reengaged because the planning director does insist to ask for, um, volunteers and making sure that the open space is kept up, so we are going to engage Mr. McCollum. We did, at that point, uh, recommend two to zero to receive and file for letters.
Other candidates? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is, uh, Chair.
That's the point, I do not want. We are going to meet again next Wednesday on the mini zoning rewrite with the planning board, so if you all want to get your comments in, and we probably bring this out in August, I ask that you all get it in. I can assure you, when we do seventeen pages of zoning on the floor, we don't do it well, so I really recommend, folks, please participate, it is committee of the whole. Thank you.
I, I just want to ask through the chair, can we please have an amended version from the planning director, if he's holding the master copy, before?
He promised he would, so I will make sure that you all have.
Now, now, so. Lost it.
It's Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
It's twenty four.
Okay, um.
Chair McCollum. Thank you, council president. I would like to make a motion, well, I'd like to make a motion for approval for applications collectively thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-one, and forty. Thank you. The reason that I took them out of order and have forty, forty was a conditional approval. It was for Palm Island Fest, and the condition was that we have the license and mass state inspection on file with clerk's office prior to a permit being issued. Other than that, all of the other applications were straightforward, complete, signatures, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, which councillor's that in?
That's on forty, correct?
Sure, so forty, the, they have a license, an operations license from, from the state. And they have a mass inspection certification. The inspection certification won't happen until usually the day or the day before, as they set up and then they need to be inspected. But they have, their common practice is to keep it on file with the clerk.
Who does the inspection pass?
State Department of Cardinals.
You mean the legislature?
Yes.
Okay, and let me try to, so this is in one, so we're referring forty with those conditions, the conditions, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty and forty-one?
Yes.
Okay, everyone over there? Further comments? Most in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Then to, motion for approval, application thirty-three, it's a movable sign from the grand trunk at the corner of South Street.
Second.
The owners of the grand trunk are moving, they need some publicity, they're looking for some direction. We had some concerns with the corner and making sure that it could be, it could accommodate a sign of, you know, three foot width type of scenario. They wanted to filter it for Council Vogel, and they think they can get a sign that fits in there and doesn't impede any of the width of the side office.
Just a little bit of clarity, thank you, Chair, Mr. President. It's actually a two foot sign, and it leans to five feet as necessary. It was a.
No water. I apologize, I just took my word to the gasser hat, so it's going to go at the corner of water and center, but there, where the shore actually can be.
It's, it's up, it's up the walkways, and so they have no traffic visibility. So it'll be down on the corner on the, what would be the western side or western center, and there's room.
So they took one of the buildings on the, on the tenth South Street side?
Yeah, the, the.
Other side.
Not the tenth, yeah, the other side.
Well, the other side.
Yeah, it's opposite road.
Opposite.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And that's what is, motion to approve amended Union Street parking restrictions. Ordinance eighty-eight, yes. In committee, we heard that in section thirteen one sixty-eight, we'd follow changes. Both sides, the Weston Lee bond of eighteen Union Street, been running Easton Lee for a distance of a hundred and seventy feet. We heard from the ward councillor how he has run a couple of tests, had heard some complaints, written some tests with parking clerk DPS. No complaints, there was no opposition in our, in our hearing, and so we recommended these restrictions.
This is ordinance.
First reading ordinance eighty. Council McCollum?
Yes.
Council Shannon?
Yes.
Council Tonta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Devon?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council Riley?
Yes.
Nothing further, just an update, we have a meeting this Wednesday, five to six thirty, it's a high grade of your choice. The main agenda item is the review of appointment two fifty-six, Marshall Libriquote Police Department. We also have preliminary general discussions, all communication three thirty-four, three thirty-five, they will be preliminary.
Very much. Chair Tom, sorry.
None, excuse me.
Chair Vogel?
That's it, right.
Thank you. Good in the order.
Yes, thank you, council president. I just wanted to let councillors know that we did finalize a date to tour the Y W C A property at Hillside. And that would be on Wednesday, July fourteenth at six thirty P M. So I tried to look at the public safety, I know the meeting is meeting that night, so I want to make sure folks can commit it. So six thirty at the Y W C A, so it is at Hillside, and email to go out with the exact address. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?